Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of Tuesday, October 8th. Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All council members are here except Mayor Rayum, who is absent at excuse. Meeting Agenda Approval. Would anyone like to switcheroo? Okay. Moving onward, we have a special presentation for Meritorious Service Awards.
Is there a button that I push here? Perfect. Good evening, Mayor, no mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Tonight, I'd like to also introduce Captain Keller and Sergeant Wynn. We have Sergeant Rogers and Sergeant Stapleton in the back as well. Sergeant Wynn and Captain Keller, can you come up here, please? Tonight, we're going to be recognizing some individuals for a very selfless act. On August 31st, 2019, at 11:25 hours, Bothell Police Officers were dispatched to the SR-527 Southeast Overpass at I-405 for a welfare check. Multiple citizens were restraining a 29-year-old male subject who was attempting to jump off the overpass onto the interstate below. Upon arrival, officers with the assistance of these same citizens quickly detained the subject and called for an ambulance to transport the subject to Evergreen Medical Center for evaluation. Officers learned that these aware and selfless citizens stopped their vehicles when they observed a male standing on the outside of the railing of the freeway overpass. The male was pushing off the railing when one of these citizens grabbed the subject by a bear hug, holding him, preventing him from jumping. Two additional citizens assisted and brought the male back over the railing to safety. Other citizens stopped their vehicles to assist, and they held and detained the subject until Bothell Police Officers arrived. These heroic citizens were Brian E. Vladivia Kovar, Liam McPherson, William Bagnall, and Gary Larkin, as well as Connor Poole. These citizens reacted quickly and bravely to help save or protect another person they didn't even know. Not only did these fine citizens protect the safety of the individual, but they avoided unprecedented amount of injury or traffic collisions that could have occurred if the subject had succeeded in jumping onto the freeway below. These outstanding men are being awarded a Meritorious Service Citizens Award for assisting the department in performing its mission to protect life and property and performing exceptional service in an extremely stressful situation. So with that, I'd like to have Brian Kovar come up. Liam McPherson. William Bagnall.
I don't think Bill's here.
No Bill? We know Bill, he's local. Gary Larkin is not here?
He's on his way, but he's gonna be late.
Okay. And Connor Poole. All right. Well, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you for your service.
Mayor, if the gentleman arrives, maybe we could just break?
Absolutely.
Chief, if you could, Chief? Chief? Ken? I know, right? If you could ask the officer outside to keep a heads up for the gentleman who's arriving late, and then let us know, and we would take a break and give him his award.
Perfect, will do.
All right.
I just think it's so great that we are recognizing people who are part of our community and make Bothell what it is. So, thank you so much for your service, it's amazing. So now, we are going to do the visitor comment portion of the meeting. Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless the council grants further time, shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through a member of council without the permission of the mayor. Do we have any visitor comments? Oh, I should have asked first. My apologies. Moving on to AB 19161, Proposed Updates to the 2019-2021 City of Bothell Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual.
Good evening. Did you want to intro- okay, all right. Well, I am Shelley Helder, I am your Governmental Affairs Consultant, and I've had the pleasure of working with you all over the last year, working on developing your legislative program, and this evening, we have a few objectives for our conversation. The first is, I will be providing an overview of what we expect to occur in the 2020 Legislative Session, which will provide a little bit of a context for our discussion about the city's draft 2020 Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual, and then we will wrap up the discussion with next steps and action items for you all to prepare for the 2020 Session. The 2020 Session is the second year of the Legislative Biennium. It's scheduled to begin on Monday, January 13th, and lasts 60 days, which includes weekends and holidays. They just go start to finish and hopefully get all of the work done in those 60 days. It is the, as the second year, it's the short year of the Biennium, and it's a non-budget year. What that means is, in 2019, the Legislature adopted their operating capital and transportation budgets for the state fiscal year, which began on July 1st of 2019 and runs through June 30th of 2021. The 2020 Legislature will consider amendments to those existing state budgets. The current operating budget is a $52 billion budget. It funds all of the state's operations. Since the Legislature adopted the operating budget back in April, the State Economic Revenue and Forecast Council has indicated the revenues have increased by roughly $450 million, which is relatively small when considering it's a $52 billion budget. All that to say that operating revenues will remain constrained through the 2020 Session. The capital budget is a $3 billion budget currently, funds bricks and mortar projects, but excludes transportation. The 2019 Legislature reserved roughly $70 million in bonds for a supplemental budget, and of that $70 million, a portion will be set aside for the local and community projects, which is the pot of money that communities like Bothell compete for funding from. And then lastly, the transportation budget, it's the most constrained of all three budgets, and that's because in 2015, the Legislature adopted a 16-year transportation revenue package, referred to as Connecting Washington. The majority of the transportation budget is tied up with implementing that 16-year package. There is very limited funding, if any, for new projects. There are a couple other transportation budget-related topics that I will cover in just a moment. But in addition to making amendments to the existing budgets, the Legislature will also be considering thousands of different policy bills. Every bill that was introduced in the 2019 Session will be considered in the 2020 Session. The political climate in 2020 will remain largely unchanged from the 2019 Session, with Democrats continuing to hold the majority in both the House and the Senate. The most significant change is Representative Lori Jenkins from Tacoma was selected by her peers in House Democratic Caucus and to be the House Speaker. And so she's replacing longtime-serving former Speaker, Representative, well, Speaker Frank Chop. Following the 2020 Session, all members of the House and half of the Senate will be up for reelection. Following the 2020 election, there will also be the redistricting process, which occurs every 10 years as a result of the census. Share all of this, to keep it in the back of your mind as we are considering the city's priorities, discussing what the agenda should look like for the 2020 Session so that we make requests that are reasonable within the current political climate. So as I mentioned, there were a handful of issues that we expect the Legislature to address in 2020. Couple of them that I want to highlight for us this evening. The first three related to transportation. Of course, there's Initiative 976, which is going to be on the November 2019 ballot. If this measure passes, it will not only impact transportation revenues for cities, but also for the state. And the state may be forced to make some decisions about cutting funding to projects that are currently listed to receive that funding. Second, both the House and the Senate Transportation Committee Chairs have indicated that to meet the growing transportation needs around the state, that they are motivated to develop another round of revenue transportation package. Last year, Senator Steve Hobbs, the Chair of the Senate Transportation Committee, put forward a package called Forward Washington. It passed out of the Senate Committee, but did not advance further than that. We have heard that Representative Jake Fai, who's the Chair of the House Transportation Committee, plans to develop his own transportation package this coming session. While we don't anticipate a package to pass in this short session, conversations and what gets developed into those packages in this early stage will form what is included in the final package when it is passed in 2021 or in the future. And then lastly, the Association of Washington Cities is developing what's being referred to as a local transportation revenue package. That will likely include some type of new revenue authority for cities to address maintenance and preservation needs. And this is in response to a Joint Transportation Committee, which is a legislative committee study that found that there is a significant backlog of maintenance and preservation needs in cities across the state, to the tune of roughly $900 million beyond what is already currently being allocated to maintenance and preservation. Aside from transportation, housing and homelessness remains a really hot topic for the Legislature. One of the items that we've heard has some momentum behind it is possible extension of the 12-year multifamily tax exemption program. Many of the developments that used that program are now reaching close to that 12-year mark. And so, when they hit that, the 12-year property tax exemption would no longer be applicable, and the units that were designated as affordable would not need to be affordable. So, they're looking at extending that possibly to a 16-year. And then, of course, there will continue to be discussions at the state level about the state's tax structure, though I don't anticipate to see any major changes to the state's tax structure in this supplemental year. So with all of that as context, I want to talk about the city's draft Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual, which should be in the packet before you. As a reminder, the city develops two legislative documents to guide engagement in Olympia. The first is a Legislative Agenda, and it's a one-page document with three to five priorities for the Biennium. The second is a Policy Manual, and this includes statements of support or opposition for various policies that impact the city. So before we discuss some of the changes to the documents, I just want to remind you of some guidance on developing these documents. So we do recommend that the city adopt a biennial agenda in order to align with the state's budget cycle. So since 2020, again, is the second year of the budget cycle, tonight, we're discussing proposed amendments to your existing Legislative Agenda and Policy Manual. And then, as I've already shared, it's important to take into consideration the political context, as well as the fiscal picture that the state is considering. A Legislative Agenda should be concise and easy for legislators to understand at a glance. And then lastly, it's important to build on past successes, which is what we have put together before you this evening. And as a reminder of some of the successes that we accomplished in the first half of the Biennium, on the screen is the list of the city's priorities for 2019. They represent a total of $2.98 million, that's coming back to the city of Bothell, which does not include the up to $650 million that's been authorized for improvements on I-405 along the north end. So really, a lot for you all to be proud of for the work that you accomplished in the first half of the Biennium. And really, what we're wanting to do is to build on these successes and continue to grow the city's legislative program. So, the first item on the Legislative Agenda that you'll see is a request for $150,000 for the bridge at Bothell Landing. As I'm sure all of you know, this project is funded through a federal grant, as well as a state grant. And when the city went out to bid, the bids came back higher than originally anticipated. And so we're recommending that the city make a request of the state Legislature to partner with the city in this project and allocate $150,000 towards the project. Given that it's a supplemental year, we think $150,000 is a reasonable request. Though I do want to set expectations appropriately that, given the amount that the city received in the first half of the Biennium, there is no guarantee that we would receive this amount in the supplemental year. The next item is monitoring implementation of improvements on I-405. Again, it was a huge success that we were able to secure that funding, but we want to make sure that we stay vigilant in making sure that that funding remains allocated to the projects that it was intended, and that it remains on schedule for improvements to be made in time for Bus Rapid Transit rollout in 2024. The next item is an update to the language regarding the Canyon Park Subarea Plan. This is recognizing that the state partnered with us in providing $400,000 to complete that plan, and makes a reference to when the plan is complete, when we're looking towards implementation, potential partnership with the state on taking the actions in order to make sure that that plan becomes a reality. And then the last item listed is the downtown revitalization efforts. In addition to the $1.5 million that the city received for downtown cleanup, there's also $2.35 million in remedial action grant through the Department of Ecology for the Simon &amp; Son Dry Cleaning Site. This is a grant that requires a city match, requires a city match of 50%, and it's on a reimbursable basis. And so, we've begun having conversations with the Department of Ecology about potentially lowering the city's match requirement. We're going through the process right now. We've heard back from Ecology that we don't meet the current criteria to be eligible for a lower match. And so we're wanting to maintain that conversation with the state about how they can continue to partner with us, whether it's through a reduced match, or whether it's through more flexibility with the site that that funding can potentially be used for. We're just wanting to continue the conversation, which is what the item on your agenda gets to. And then you may notice that the 2019 Agenda had a reference to the Criminal Justice Training Center and adequate funding for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. Those, that request was fully funded in the biennial budget, so we're not recommending that it be included in this supplemental or amended Agenda for you all. However, I did just hear today, actually, that the CJTC underestimated the amount that they would need for the Biennium, and so they will be making a supplemental budget request. They don't yet know what that specific dollar amount is, but I think it's something that we'll keep an eye on. It is referenced in the city's policy manual, so we can continue to support that request, even if it's not something that's elevated to the level of priority on a legislative agenda. So, next steps are to provide feedback, either this evening or to staff, so that we can implement any recommendations that you all have and finalize the legislative documents. We're hoping to get feedback from you all by October 22nd, so we can incorporate those changes and present you with final documents at the November 12th Council Meeting. After the adoption of those legislative documents, we have scheduled some meetings with each member of the city's delegation to talk about the city's priorities, as well as to have a conversation with legislators about what their priorities are and to consider how the city may be able to support them in the 2020 Session. And of course, session begins on January 13th. AWC City Action Days are January 28th and 29th. So we're talking with city staff right now about the best way to take advantage of that opportunity for you all to come down to City Action Days, meet with the delegation, whether it's at that time or another time, and make sure that, you know, that you're as engaged as you would like to be in advancing the city's priorities. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Who would like to go first? I feel like I should say Bueller. Councilmember Zorn? You look like maybe, perhaps.
I guess my question is, are questions about what we just covered here, or the policy manual? Because you said policy manual, we could talk to staff about.
Thank you, and I actually did skip that. So I went over the changes in the Legislative Agenda. There are quite a few more changes to the policy manual that, given for the sake of time, I didn't go over each one of those changes here. The changes in the policy manual reflect some of the bills that came up during the 2019 Session that the city weighed in on. So we wanted to make sure that it was really clear, and they were included in the policy manual. And there are also some recommendations from staff of items that have come up since that document was originally developed. So, if there are, if there is feedback for the policy manual, we can definitely take it now or share it with staff, whatever you prefer.
So, can you humor me?
Of course.
I went through and, I mean, starred the things that really resonated with me. But I had a couple questions. For public safety, there was a comment, "Support legislation that makes it easier for public service agencies to collaborate with social services..." Oh no, sorry. Couple more bullet points. "Support and promote programs that enhance the benefits of mutual aid agreements between local governments." Do you have any speci- you know, I know that we periodically have this discussion within certain contexts. Is there anything that's, is this for maintaining what we've got going on right now? Or is there something new, you know, newer and bigger that we haven't considered as far as a mutual aid agreement between?
That's a great question, and I may defer to staff on the specifics of that. I don't know if the appropriate staff member is here, but...
So, the mutual aid agreements are so key to our ability to deliver services, and the reason it's in there is, we just want to ensure that the council supports that, and then any opportunities to expand those programs or any legislation that might come about that supports those programs or gives, gets an opportunity to expand, that the council's supportive of it. So it's sort of a base of who we are, is how we deliver services.
So, I know that in the past, it's been lifelines for us to function as a city.
Yes.
And so, this is just keeping the door open for those opportunities when they come up. Am I understanding that?
Correct. Because again, the idea is that we understand, and please feel free, this is your legislative platform, so it's very important that you all support this, and we've articulated your positions on things accurately. So we put down things that we think are important, and what we've heard from you and your priorities, but want to make sure that it's clear and that you support those things. But yes, that's the purpose of this, is, because when items come about, sometimes we have a really quick turnaround. A piece of legislation may come up that is something that is very supportive, that the council is very supportive of, or very opposed to. Sometimes we have a day or two to be able to write a letter, and that's the purpose of this, is to be able to be effective. You want to be engaged in statewide issues, and this platform gives us the ability to do that in a time-efficient manner.
I have to say that, you know, I was very impressed that it resonated so well with how council has been functioning. I did see, there was, oh, I must be thinking about... Oh, this is not even the policy. It's something related to, it's our next attachment. Can I leap to that? For what to expect during the Legislative Session?
Yeah, and that's just a reference document, but happy to answer questions about it.
Right, well, I was kind of curious about, it's page 16 of our Agenda Packet. It's about crime-free rental housing. And so, I was, that the AG had filed a lawsuit against Sunnyside that a crime-free rental housing was discriminatory. So I was kind of confused, is this becau- does this take away the housing rights for setting ground rules of what acceptable behavior is? And how you might, you know, does that take that away from housing, or?
So I think that's part of the reason that it's going to be a discussion for the Legislature in this coming session, is, imagine the city of Sunnyside didn't think that they were breaking any laws when they instituted their crime-free rental housing program. And so I think the point of the Attorney General's lawsuit, and then the Legislature wanting to take this up, is to bring clarity to this issue, because it, there isn't clarity right now.
Okay, so it's clarifying that it's not taking away the right to...
That's my understanding.
Okay. Okay. And then, medication-assisted treatment in jails for law enforcement. Do you happen to know if that's for, I'm sure this is people who are needing whatever kind of medical treatment. Do you happen to know if this is for people who are in jail waiting trial, or people who've been sentenced, or both?
I don't know exactly which population it's for, but to answer the first question, the medication-assisted treatment is to target people with substance abuse disorders. So that's the target population. And my, so the kind of genesis of this topic is that several local agencies have started implementing these types of programs at the local level, and they've had success in various, through the development of various programs. And so the state is looking at now doing a statewide program, saying, "Anyone who has a jail or prison, okay, you're going to be required to provide mat." And so that was the discussion last year. AWC came out with a lot of concern about that, saying, you know, "If you're going to mandate us to do something, you need to make sure that you provide the resources to do that." And so the discussion right now is not just making sure that there is resources available for cities, but also what are the other challenges that exist with implementation of a medication-assisted treatment program? Who would be the particular, who would be the specific population that would be required to receive treatment? A lot of, you hit the nail on the head that there are a lot of questions.
Right, and how you would call, how you would make that decision for medical application? You know, if somebody was, if that was an appropriate treatment or not.
Right.
But, but I see this as a key part of mental health, too.
Yes.
Physical health and mental health, and so, and it sounds like it's very broad, whether it's somebody waiting for trial or sentenced. And, AWC is opposing a forfeiture, and I was confused on it. During the 2019 Legislative Session, a proposal was introduced that would have significantly restricted city forfeiture authority. I have no idea what that is.
So, when, say in the example, there is illegal narcotics, and the law enforcement collects the illegal property, that property or any of the, any value that was derived out of that illegal action is considered a civil asset forfeiture. And so there's been discussions to push that more towards law enforcement having more authority to use that, and there's also been discussions about law enforcement losing the authority so that they can't seize illegal assets. So this, the AWC's position has been, we don't think that if it's illegal, it was illegal. It should be forfeited. So that's what that is alluding to.
Okay, all right, thank you. I think that's the sum of my ponderings, so thank you.
I'd like to go next. Councilmember Olson?
In the planning section, the annexation proposals that they had, do you know if those are to make the proposals easier for citizen-driven annexations? Or, because I think our previous attempts at annexations within the city were more city-driven, and those were not so successful, and it seems that when there's the citizen-driven ones, they are.
Yeah, that's a good question. The annexation proposals that have come forward have been city-driven, and they've been particularly targeted at the unincorporated islands, annexation of unincorporated islands. And there's, and within Thurston County, there's a group that's advancing legislation that would provide an alternative method to annexing unincorporated islands in addition to the referendum option. So that's one of the proposals that's come up in the past, and I know is going to be brought forward again. I'm not... I'm not aware of any proposals that are being made on citizen initiatives.
Councilmember McNeil.
Okay, Deputy Mayor. Excuse me, under public safety, it looks like there's a bullet point in there, "Support legislation to change maximum amount of time newly hired officers from six months to two months." Is that for the total training time?
Correct, so in current statute, it says from the time of hire to when they complete the training, it can't be more than six months. And the reason that they're looking at changing that is because there is a little bit of a sentiment then that legislature, the legislature only allocates enough funding to complete classes for new hires to meet that six-month statutory framework. If that was changed to two months, then the thought is that there would be an increase in funding, increase of classes in order to meet that on a shorter timeline.
So would the officer, what would the total amount of training an officer needs to have to be on the street?
So it would still be the same length of training, it's just the wait time to start the training would be diminished from the statutory six months to then saying, "You can't hire an officer and make him wait around for longer than two months before he starts training."
Okay, and during that current six-month period of time where we're waiting, obviously those are officers that are not on the street, but what takes place in that timeframe? Are there checks, background checks, or are there things that happen?
Yeah, every department handles it a little differently. I know that some police departments use that as a time to go over training of software, getting them up to date on HR protocol. So there's a lot of onboarding that's done during that time, but I think in general, police departments would say that it doesn't take six months to do that amount of onboarding, and that two months is probably a more reasonable time if there is any backlog at all. Ideally, you would hire someone and you would be able to send them to training immediately.
Okay, and is, in that time, do we ever find that officers are, then we don't hire them?
I would imagine. I don't know specifically for the Bothell Police Department, but I can definitely find out if that's been the case. I think that that's one of the reasons behind lowering the wait time is when you hire someone, you would expect them to start right away. And I know many cities hire someone and they're not, or they identify someone they'd like to hire, and they know that there is a wait time, and just because of the city's financial constraints, they're not able to start paying that officer right away. And so the candidate that they've identified goes to look somewhere else because they're not, the city's not able to pay them immediately. So every jurisdiction handles it a little differently.
Okay, great, and then I did have one more question. The impact law enforcement from obtaining video surveillance from public, and then there's highlighted in yellow in our packet, or private? Can you speak to that, or private entities?
Yeah, so this has come about as a result of some conversation about Ring. Ring is a, I don't know, is it Google? I'm not exactly sure who makes Ring, but the doorbells that have the video surveillance, there's been some conversation about who has access to that information. And if a law enforcement authority wants access to it, then the person, the owner of that information should be able to share it. There's been some questions about whether or not law enforcement should have access to it at all. So this, this in particular, I think, is going to be a topic of conversation, and this is a position that was recommended by the police department. So if there are changes to the language, then definitely is now the time to have that conversation.
Okay, so if I'm understanding it correctly, if I have a ring on my house and there's backup video on there, the police can come to me and ask me for that video, and then I can turn it over, but if I don't turn it over, then they can subpoena it or something?
That's, my, my understanding is they, they don't have a right to that currently, but there's conversation about should they have that right, or should they not even be able to access it at all if it's from a private entity? If it's public surveillance on a city building, then that's why there's the distinction between the public and the private entities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I just would like you to speak a little bit more under public safety about supporting efforts to move toward restorative justice in the court system. Is there any more than just that kind of statement, or is there some underlying proposals?
Yeah, good question. So this has come about as a result of, I think, some conversations that you all have been having about how to make changes to the city's justice system. And there are not necessarily proposals in the legislature right now about movements towards restorative justice, but it's something that we wanted to make sure was reflected in the event that there is a proposal. We're also looking at how to provide you all with information about how other cities possibly do restorative justice, so we're looking at a visit maybe with the city of Olympia, and they have a community court. So perhaps tying that in with a visit down to visit the legislators in January.
And I think that's very important for us since we have a new judge coming in and some of her thoughts are about restorative justice and taking some steps in that direction, so appreciate what you could give us on it.
I guess that's it. My questions were answered, thank you very much. Is there anything else that we need to add?
Basically, are we, if there's anything else as you reflect, we need to finalize this, so based on your feedback, unless we hear something different, we'll finalize it in the way that it's been presented to you this evening.
Everyone okay with that? Great, thank you so much for the briefing and the updates. Okay, I thought we had public comment, but they've left, or they, oh, okay, perfect. So we had some people come in late, and they wanted to speak about Wayne, and since that's our next topic, I thought if you don't mind, we'd let them speak.
Hi there. My name is Sarah Gustafson, and these are my sons, Aaron and Matthew. And my husband was supposed to be here to watch them, but unfortunately, he couldn't make it in time, so it's just me. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for waiting, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank them, good job, guys.
Great job.
My name is Sarah Gustafson. I live at 10808 Northeast 154th Place, which is very close to the Wayne land, and I applaud our city council and all of our staff for your bravery, for your foresight and hard work in everything having to do with Wayne. And that's why I've read that study about Wayne in the council packet. Now, the consultants say that a big hotel is feasible, but their study raises doubts. So here are some questions for your study session. First of all, whatever the project is, is it a good deal for Bothell? I'm an accountant, so I looked at the financial projections in the study, and the hotel example they give would not be profitable. In fact, that example would take a taxpayer subsidy of $2.9 million, just to get started. That does not sound feasible to me. So for any proposal, let's ask, what would this cost the city, and how many years would it take to earn that back in tax revenue? And some more questions. If you choose a hotel, would it compete with McMinniman's? What about new competition, like? Hey there, kiddo. The St. Edward's Lodge? And for any proposal, does it adequately address the impact of a potential recession? And finally, can we build trail-related businesses in Wayne? If you make something that's fun for locals, tourists, and babies, will come too. Some of the ideas I love are brew pubs and bike cubs, tea shops and kayak stops. Now, this all sounds pretty hipster, but the point is, these smaller businesses can be more sustainable and less risky than a big project, especially in a recession. So what can the city do to get proposals from these smaller, local-oriented businesses? In the end, funding the Wayne Park is a tricky task, and I salute all of you for taking it on. Thank you, good luck studying on. Thank you so much, appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you so much. Okay, so next on the agenda is AB 19-162, Former Wayne Golf Course Highest and Best Used Analysis Report, specifically targeting the front nine four-acre parcel.
So we're going to, our consultant was not able to be with us this evening, but he is, we've got a presentation, and he's going to join us, and so Robin's going to dial him. And... We've got the coolest system here. Is he there? Rob, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, great, I'm going to do a little bit of an introduction, and then I'll hand it over to you.
Perfect.
Thank you. So councilmembers, thank you very much. I'm very excited to be here to announce to you that we've reached our first major milestone in understanding how, what the highest and best use is for the four unencumbered acres at the former Wayne Golf Course. And just as a little bit of a reminder of how we got to where we are today, this past February, you all approved a grant agreement with the Port of Seattle to fund 50% of a feasibility study and a market analysis. This, with that grant, we went out for, put out an RFP and did a search for a consultant, and we landed on Hundon Strategic Partners. Hundon Strategic Partners was given very specific instructions about what was, what was, what was appropriate for that piece of property based on the deed restructurings and what was a vision for the city. So they were, what's important for that piece of property is that it activate the remaining 85 acres, that it incorporates the existing landscape, it fits into the existing landscape, that it connects to the river and to the trail system. What they cannot do on that land is build housing, manufacturing, warehouse, or office. So with those instructions, we've asked Hundon Strategic Partners to simply do a market analysis and a feasibility study. One of the reasons why we do a feasibility study is that it's super important that we get this right. This is going to be a public-private partnership, we cannot sell that property, so whatever we build there needs to be an economic development engine, which it was intended to do, but also too, we want to make sure that it's sustainable for the next 20 years or forever, how long we determine to lease the land. We're very fortunate, I feel, to have Hundon Strategic Partners as part of our team. Not only do they have extensive background in doing market analysis and feasibility study, but Rob Hundon actually teaches public-private partnerships at the International Economic Development Council. So with that, Rob, you're on.
Okay, great, thanks so much, Jeanie, really appreciate it, and appreciate being here, or virtually being here tonight, so, and let me just make sure we've got everything under control, we'll be... Oh, and you know what, so the video is on delay, so that's pretty interesting. So will the presentation be up on the screen?
Your study overview is on screen.
Okay, perfect, all right, great, I appreciate it. Okay, so everything that Jeanie said is correct, so let's just get into it, because I know our time is relatively short. So if we just go to slide two, the study overview, basically what Jeanie said is correct. We were given very specific instructions about these four particular acres on the former Wayne Golf Course, and there are parameters around really what could be, what could be done. And the, the idea is, with these four acres, could those be made productive enough to generate an economic development project that would ultimately be positively impactful fiscally for the city? And potentially then help support the maintenance and care of the rest of the acreage, as well as the city in general. So it's a pretty tall order, and so we went through our analysis. So, and met with many, many stakeholders, and this is a 29-slide version of 160-page study that hopefully you all have access to and take some time to review, but we looked at all kinds of things to come to our conclusion. And as Jeanie mentioned, 80% of our clients are public sector in nature, looking to do transformative economic development-style projects like this, so this fits in to our wheelhouse nicely. So if we move to slide three, we go right into the reality. So as we went through this process, we realized that there are a number of realities and conditions that exist that impact the overall feasibility of a project that could be located there. First, the location is slightly removed from the critical mass of commerce downtown, and it's not really surrounded by any commercial clusters. And so this former Wayne Golf Course is located away from downtown, just slightly out of the range of walkability for most folks, for foot traffic on a sort of an easy basis. And so that's, that is both a challenge and an opportunity. However, it also offers sufficient access for motors and trail users. It is along the busiest part of the Seminole River Trail, which gets about 2,000 people per day on weekends. And while it is removed from the restaurant and retail cluster in downtown, it is, still has potential due to the draw of the natural assets there on the trail and the river and of course, the former golf course. Your market is an extremely strong and growing market with great demographics and a diversity of demographics. And so this has sort of sets you up for sort of positive investment from developers and makes you attractive to investment in developers. The other thing that we were really, really impressed by, and I think developers will be too, is how much care you've taken with your community and the look and feel of it. Unlike some other communities that appear to be suburbs, you have a distinct look and feel that makes it seem like Bothell has been around for a very long time, and you've curated that look and feel, and so I think it makes it very attractive, and you continue to see investment in your downtown and surrounding area that I think is a positive halo effect on this site. Also, you're surrounded by some compelling developments in the surrounding area with wineries and stilleries and breweries and higher-end boutique hotels that have been successful. And anytime you're making a recommendation for a type of a project, you look for examples of success, and those comps exist. We have the project restrictions there at the bottom of page three, "No residential manufacturing or other industrial uses, office or storage." And this really wants to be something that can both generate money commercially, but be open to the public in as many ways as possible. And with that, the site has sentimental value for many residents, so it's important to maintain the history of the community as you move forward, as well as the former uses, and also the current natural environment. So all of those things put a lot of pressure on sort of the perfect development, right? So headlines on slide four, "Demand and Likely Success for Destination Hotel Experiences in Bothell." So based on examples of success, the strong local market, the fact that this area generally is starting to be seen as a little bit of a getaway, which is unusual and positive for you, that, that gives us, and in discussions with existing hoteliers of the same ilk, who are positive and want to see that additional critical mass of other unique destination lodging and related product, those are all very positive signs for sort of the destination boutique hotel. We did also find that while entertainment can happen as an ancillary benefit in a public setting or in a private ticketed setting, that there really was an indication from the marketplace that that should be a strong priority in the investment lineup, as it's already a fairly crowded field out there. So we want to do that, introduce that as an ancillary use on the site, and not, and also in terms of an outdoor venue, that could pose some challenges for many of us and that sort of... in terms of an outdoor venue, that could pose some challenges for many of us and that sort of thing. So we want to be careful with dedicated entertainment. A distillery or brewery would definitely add to the destination appeal and viability of the project and sort of a selling point for the overall project, not just to make it something that is for overnight guests, but something that's available for people coming off the trail. Breweries and distilleries are great magnets for recreational folks on trails as well as those driving in. And you don't have to stay at a hotel to enjoy some time at a distillery or a brewery or even a winery and you're surrounded by many of those and that critical mass is positive for you. The market is missing a larger banquet slash ballroom space for larger events. So this came up time and time again. There's really, once you sort of outgrow a certain size, your options are extremely limited locally to host events. And so that is something that we recommended as part of this project. Bothell's downtown development, as well as the demographic data, has proven that there's a healthy market for retail and restaurants. So the key to drawing visitors to the project site will require a project, a product that really offers a unique and comprehensive experience. And again, you're growing your reputation in that critical mass. And so in the destination real estate world, more is actually more. It doesn't necessarily detract from the existing. You may be adding another slice to the pie, but the pie is bigger and so everybody generally wins when all of, when you're creating that critical mass, which is what you're already doing and we're recommending that you do some more. Compelling, unique projects are typically harder to finance. So when the idea first came up, or any of these ideas for a compelling sort of destination real estate style development, to be honest with you, I was not convinced before we started. I thought, oh man, these folks are sort of off their rockers thinking that this could work. But that was before we started doing our analysis. And the reality is, is that these kinds of projects have been developed and are being developed and are successful in and around this area. Now, that's not to say that what we're recommending is going to be a grand slam homerun and won't need any priming of the pump upfront from the city to make it attractive to a developer, but you have a good shot at it because there are other existing examples around that provide developers that confidence that this can be pulled off. And we find that in the, the strong rates that are being garnered by the competitive set of boutique and unique hotels and related developments. Location on the site remains a challenge, but the wellness vibe provides energy. So even though the site's not easily walkable from the downtown cluster, it's got to be able to stand alone and survive and be sustainable. And its location on the trail, really that story of wellness and recreation and nature really should be woven into the overall project. So, you know, this is your land and it's your project and so you get to dictate within the bounds of mathematics and finance, what can get developed there. And so things that you want, public access, wellness, nature, all of these things can be infused into the ultimate development. So now we move on to slide six, the retail and restaurant market overview. And what we're going to go through in these next sets of slides are basically over of the types of things that we studied to see how they would do. And here we have a map of the different kinds of dining establishments that you have, mostly in the downtown area. And what you pretty much find is it's middle, middle upscale, middle and sort of casual and cafe-style dining and coffee. There's not really much upscale dining and so there is a real gap in the marketplace for a more destination dining type of thing. And we're not necessarily talking about a Michelin three-star restaurant, but we're just talking about something that is a step above what's already existing. And when you do that, that makes your basket of goods more powerful and you can, you can attract folks when you offer something unique and different that is not already offered. So that's some of the feedback and we go on to slide seven and see that because of the increasing levels of income in the area, you're able to support newer, more interesting, higher end and a whole variety of price points and styles and cuisines. And so that is, that is very positive. And overall, restaurants do outperform retail when it comes to just overall sales production per square foot, which means that those support higher rents. So this is a strong market for you and something that you can really build upon. And we go into more of this on slide eight. This site, of course, because it's sort of unique and on its own, would really want you to do something unique as part of this development and not something generic. Generic things are much more easy to finance, but they certainly don't do anything to enhance who you want to be as a community or really to enhance the viability of the site. So there is that push and pull between, you know, the generic McDonald's or Starbucks of the world and Hampton Inns, which you can finance all day long, and something really compelling that's going to set you apart for the next 50 years. If we go to slide nine, we get into the lodging overview. So there are a nice mix of hotels in the marketplace. You have your standard sort of select service branded hotels like Country Inn and Suites, Residence Inn, Holiday Inn Express, Courtyard, Hampton Inn, those sorts of things. But what's really interesting and totally changes the reality here is you have McMinimans, you have the Willow's Lodge and now you have the new, the new project that's under construction that again, is another similar comp for this kind of a project and they're doing very well. And again, you're surrounded by, you know, 100 wineries just to your east and northeast and numerous other sort of destinations and elements that help make packaging a tourism-oriented development very much a reality and possible. If we go to slide 10, here's a bunch of numbers that I hope you can read. So what this basically says is on the left side, it shows your total competitive set, a number of rooms. Then we get to room nights sold, which is sort of right towards the middle. And you can see that that's been increasing quite a bit. So you've had supply increasing, but you've had demand increasing even more. So the kicker at the bottom is the compound annual growth rate. And demand has been outstripping supply, even though supply has grown quite a bit. And so our occupancy rate has overall been positive and has absorbed these new rooms. Our average daily rate is the ADR and that has increased from 142.60 up to $171 last year and is on the increase this year as well. Our RevPAR is when we multiply occupancy times rate and that has increased too, even though we had a little bit of dip in occupancy with the opening of the last hotel in 2017, which took just a little bit of time to absorb. Now, these are averages. So obviously the select service hotels are going to be performing a little less than this and our night hotels are going to be performing a lot higher than this and in fact, they are. And in our 160-page report, there's much more detail on each of these hotels, especially the compelling ones that are sort of case studies for us. So on slide 11, we get into basically all the things that I talked about. The fact that McMinimans is, average rate is between 150 and 190 dollars and you get as high as 250 and sometimes even higher than that in certain high-demand periods. And that is true for, for that project as well as others. The lodge, I think Edward just goes into open in 2020. And while it will provide additional competition, it will also be another example of a compelling destination on its own. It's going to be totally different from what exists with Willow's Lodge and McMinimans. And we would expect that this would want to be different and unique as well and start to give your whole area that mash of a destination area, which is really cool. The meeting market feedback implications on 12 just basically tell us that there's just, just this need in the marketplace for function spaces, for charity events, for weddings, for corporate conferences, for all kinds of things that, you know, just aren't big enough to go to the really big hotels and like the Lindwood Convention Center, where we are also doing an expansion study, but are too big for what you have locally. So if you want to keep that economic activity happening in town, you need to have something that's going to provide a space for that. And it would be nice if you had that in something that was a little more unique to you and not sort of a generic feeling space. Slide 13, we're getting to spa and wellness feedback and implications. This is something that we would leave up to the developer. Spas can be a real positive for a project like this, but they can sometimes also be a loss leader. So we would want to look into this a little more to see how much of a spa they would want to include. But we think it is a positive opportunity for them and we do a little analysis for you in here to sort of get into the weeds a bit, but that is something that could certainly help set the project apart. On the entertainment side, on slide 14, there's a lot of entertainment options around. Not so many right up by Bothell, but overall, what our understanding of in looking at all the options out there is that the market, there's plenty out there. So when you get into entertainment, it's always good to provide it onsite as an ancillary benefit with music sort of in an ambient way, but you don't necessarily want to create a ticketed sales situation where you're going to lose your shirt indoor or outdoor. And so we really pulled back on any sort of recommendation for a dedicated entertainment venue. Then we looked at breweries, distilleries and wineries. And obviously you've got wineries at the Wazoo, that's a technical term, in Woodinville and you have a nice supply of breweries and distilleries, which is in the six-mile radius, which is really giving your area sort of, again, that positive halo reputation of being able to package a few days of activities for anyone who comes to visit. And so we do, we have done an analysis on all of those. So on 16 and 17 and 18, you see the winery map and it's 57 wineries in the warehouse district and 35 wineries in Hollywood District. And so any sort of adult beverage attraction, and I will say that we work on a lot of Kentucky bourbon distilleries and tours related to distillery. This is a huge draw for people and something that we want to support as part of this development. So I'm going to move now to our projections on slide 22 and recommendations. So the recommendations basically breaks down an 80 to 90-room boutique hotel with a decent-sized ballroom so that you can have a capacity for up to 500 people. That does not necessarily need 500 parking spaces either. We assume usually two and a half people per car, so that puts you at about 200 parking spaces. And of course, there's Uber and Lyft these days, which are becoming more and more utilized. We would include a brewery or distillery as well as a restaurant component. And overall, these are not inexpensive to build. There are essentially resort-style costs involved in the development. But we actually, once we ran all the traps and all the numbers, which you'll see here in a little bit, it comes close to breaking even. Now, someone else may come along and say it more than breaks even and other people will come back and say there's no way that it will because they're going to have different assumptions about what they're including in their development and their costs and those sorts of things. But we believe this is close enough to be positive and to continue moving forward with the developer solicitation and selection process, as well as having a real discussion about, candid discussion about what kind of tools you could use to induce development to make this more attractive to developers. Slide 23, we could have some additional recommendations like sort of Locavore onsite farming and gardening to use at the restaurant for locally sourced products. We talked about new entertainment, dedicated and ticketed. We did assume a brewery, distillery would be part of it. Trail usage and that whole story should really factor into the overall programming as well as any wellness and spa setup that exists. And like we said, we do believe that this will require some upfront public support, but every other alternative was either something that we know that the community would not like because it would be very generic and it might be profitable, but it would be something that was so blatantly commercial and generic, it would not serve you well. Or it would just not pencil at all. So those are sort of the alternatives that we're faced with. So this is, in our view, the highest and best use of these four acres and we suggest moving forward on that. Slide 24 is a lot of numbers that I'm guessing you probably can't read and if you could, you'd wonder what they all mean. But essentially, it's revenue and expense projection for this project and shows you the occupancy, the rate, you know, starting basically in the mid-200s on the average daily rate and occupancy is getting around the 80% range. And then on slide 25, we show some assumptions related to a brewery or a distillery as a tenant or an owned part or component of this project. And then we show the supportable equity and debt. Now that could change based on a lot of things. The cost of the project could change up or down, the interest rate could change up or down. A number of things can change up or down. But based on this, and we assume $450,000 per key to build this, which is very tall cotton and, you know, most, you know, your Hampton Inns of the world are 150,000 a key or 160,000 a key. And so this is about three times more than that per hotel key. And with that, we believe you get very, very close to something that would have some feasibility to it. And then once it's up and running, of course, then you have all of those fiscal benefits of the jobs, the hotel taxes and all those sorts of things. And we didn't run a fiscal impact analysis on this project, but that's something we can certainly talk about down the road. The valuation is basically another way to look at the value of the project versus the cost. And essentially, the value came out even higher than the supportable financing at 440,000 per room. So it was pretty much right in the same ballpark there, bringing this to a... And when we say break even, this assumes a developer's, excuse me, expected return on investment. That is not just like zero break even. It is, you know, 18% return on equity and all of those sorts of things. So with that, hopefully I've not gone too far over my time and I'd be happy to take questions about the prior process or the future process.
Thank you, Rob.
Who would like to go first? Okay, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you, Ron. So in all of your analysis I'm looking at, there is a certain population that I just don't feel I've heard tonight. And so I want to know what your, what your analysis of is that I've heard a little bit about hotels and about wineries and about breweries and about Woodinville and what we're building here in Bothell as well. But I haven't heard very much about what we have to offer in like a community center or attached to an indoor/outdoor food venue or something that would give the University of Washington, Bothell and our Cascadia students a place to go. Basically, I just not hearing that that was considered. And I'm very concerned that we should be looking at a community center, that our young people do need a place to go, that there is a profit in that generation if you offer food, if you offer events, a place to have events as well. Also, I think it also means to me that there is a lot of diversity in our community. So if you have an event space where they can have their functions as well. I didn't hear any of this. I'm wondering if you considered that, those aspects.
Well, absolutely. And we heard from so many community members about so many different kinds of things. And at the end of the day, there absolutely does want and need to be the ability of the community to access and utilize whatever is developed there in a meaningful way. But at the same time, math, we can't fight math and we can't fight the financial math that the things that oftentimes we want are not necessarily generating profits. So if we are trying to do something that is going to provide... So if we are trying to do something that is going to provide long-term economic benefits to support the rest of the former Wayne Golf Course's, um, sustainability, uh, we have to have a balance between things that generate money and things that don't. So, um, what I would say is we just need to be very conscious and candid about those choices because all of those will push and pull on the ultimate, um, financial reality. And so anything that you want to insert to this four acres that dilutes the, the ability to generate net revenue will end up sort of costing you upfront or ongoing.
And, and I appreciate that. Um, but basically, um, a community center would generate partnerships with, uh, probably the universities, Cascadia, uh, the school district. We could have, um, great partnerships. When I look at other cities that have done the community centers such as this, Snohomish, um, when I go up to Granite Falls, there are definitely opportunities to serve what the community values and yet to partner so that there is a profit margin.
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear you. Could you please repeat what you said?
(laugh) Sorry about that.
Jennifer, do you want to respond to that?
Sure.
So the purpose, again, the purpose of this study was to identify the best and highest use for councils. This, so again, this is the, the first step. It's the first milestone in looking at the use of these four acres. And so the instructions to the consultant were, help us identify what the best and highest use is. This is a policy decision for council. The direction that I was given was this is supposed to be an economic engine. We saved the four acres, paid full market value so we could have an economic engine that would help pay for the maintenance of 85 acres in perpetuity so that there's some revenue being generated. That's the purpose of the study. If the council's interested in a community center, that's a whole nother analysis and a whole nother look at something. That's not the direction I was given. That's not a revenue generator. It, it may have some, some offsets, but community centers cost money. The city would have to build it, city would have to maintain it and the city would have to operate it. And you would look for partnerships to help offset some of those costs, but you will never make money on those. Community centers are at the cost of the community.
And I guess I would say I appreciate the fact that they study was and the direction you were given was the best and highest use, but I still do think that because this Wayne land is so important to the community that we actually have to look at other options that would be not the best and highest use, but the best community effort to bring something that they value. I mean, I guess that's my.
One thing.
That's absolutely in the council's discretion.
Yeah, and one thing that I can mention is, you know, anytime that there is a, um, function space component, which we have included in this, and we also suggested indoor, outdoor activity areas, right? Um, as part of any developer RFP, uh, process, you can say, our expectation, you can make it a priority and this happens oftentimes, you could say, uh, we want some, uh, for lack of a better term, I'll say set asides for local nonprofits or local community use for certain times or days of the week, obviously not the prime times of evenings and weekends, but during the day or whatever, when say the local Rotary Club or the student activity club wants to have a meeting, those spaces could be made available for either free or a lower rate than normal. And that is pretty standard, um, in public-private partnerships. So it's something that I think, again, it will make, it will be dilutive of the value and the profit, but at the same time, it, it mitigates a, a concern and, and hits the city goal. And so those are policy decisions that then have a price tag associated with them. But if that's something you want to do, you just need to know that that's what will happen as a result. And so there are sort of ways to move through that and, and sort of answer some of those issues without throwing the baby out with the bathwater because I think you can kind of accomplish all of those things that you're trying to do, but it can't be one way 100% or another. Otherwise, as the city manager mentioned, um, you, you'll, you'll be in a, a net negative situation.
Councilmembers, orans.
Well, I, uh, to be, to be honest, uh, what's about ready to come out of my mouth is just stream of consciousness here, was we were talking about a distillery. I'm not, it, it felt like a gut punch in that I was thinking, what is there for kids? What is there for senior citizens? Um, but the priority is make money to help protect this land. Um, we need a community center. We need a, we need a spot for business incubators. I mean, we, and, and as we're talking about this, I'm thinking we're asking a lot to happen in these four acres. So I need time to digest and go through the Kubler Ross's five stages of death and dying to, you know, embrace a distillery and look at that because I, I hear the sensibility in it. I guess my only caveat request is that, you know, UW-Bothell Cascadia has got a great access to their wetlands there. They, and they're involved with what's going on at Wayne Golf Course, but do we need to set something aside specifically for them on a wetland? Maybe not. But something that speaks to them, that they want to come gather, that families can bring kids to, that senior citizens can come to, that they're, my hope is that there's little pieces of that that will speak to everybody in the community so they feel like they have, mm, some ownership or community in it. But if the big driver is the distillery, I get it. I just need to time, time to digest on how do you make that work and still, um, be connected with the rest of the population of Bothell where they can come in and out of it. And I don't know what that looks like and that's not, that's not in my, um, toolbox to make, you know, to describe what that looks like. I just will know it when I see it. Kind of like wave my magic wand, make that happen and then I'll know what it looks like. So that's my, that's my only thing is, is that I would love to make sure that as we look at a money generator, that there's pieces of it that everyone in Bothell can feel connected to and can approach it and be engaged with it.
If I could, uh, uh, remind council is that this is a first step in many steps and this will probably evolve and take different shapes over the next several months. And also too, we have 89 acres and this is five, four acres out of 89. And it's a, and it's a real opportunity to create something that is unique for Bothell and is achieves your goals of generating income. And I feel your, I feel your gut punch with regards to the distillery, but that's not an absolute. That's a recommendation at this time. And we've got lots of time to discuss, discuss it and mull it over.
Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Agnew.
I kind of feel like, uh, what did we save this land for? We saved this land so we could use it. We didn't save this land so we could put an 80-room hotel on it. I understand that we want to have revenue generated to maintain that, this park, but what's this about? I mean, I, I understand that we need, uh, to have something, some room to where, whether it's a community center or whether it's a room that people can just go to. You know, it's a wonderful site to have weddings. It's a wonderful site to have meetings. It's a wonderful site to have a, a little, uh, pub, uh, be it that a distillery that, that has food, that can grab the people from the trail, that can grab the people in the city and that can come down on the slime scooters or lime bikes and, and, and have fun, whether they can rent a kayak and go down. I, I just, I, I understand it being revenue generated, there's no question about that, but I just don't envision that being there. I, you know, and this is the first step of many and that, that's a great step. Uh, but, you know, we had something very upscale in the city was called the Prime and it lasted a month. Uh, so, you know, what are the people going to want? I think, I think we need to go out probably and, and have a lot more interaction with the citizens to find out what they want there. Uh, you know, and I know we had all these visions initially to where the UW was going to come out and give classes on ecology to the kids and you're going to rent kayaks and, and make the trails a little bit more to where, you know, people can go on the bikes more and, and walk more and have viewing sites, you know, so that people can, you know, come out and see the otters that are in that river, see the muskrats that are running through there, see the eagles that go down and steal the otter's fish, uh, that my wife shreds and shrieks at. But, you know, they're there and, and a lot of, a lot of the people in Bothell don't get the opportunity to see that. So initially, you know, what I'm thinking is ouch, uh, you know, but this is the first step of many.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, so I have a couple of questions. Um, you had men, um, mentioned 2,000 people draws, 2,000, the trail draws 2,000 people a day. Is that 2,000 people a day through the Bothell area or is that just 2,000 people a day on the trail in general?
Um, that's a portion of the trail that you're on the highest used portion of the trail in the state apparently. And the fact, the figures that we have in the study is a, on weekends, it's 2,000 per day in that particular stretch by the site that, that is measured.
Okay. And then, um, the property, the, the rent, the revenue that the city would generate from either a ground lease and/or sales taxes, I, I didn't dive into those numbers as much as I would like to. Do you know off the top of your head what, uh, what that calculation would be?
No, I mean, that's to be negotiated. So, um, all of that is, you know, this is sort of sets you up for a structure to then go out and have conversations with the development community through a formalized process that, you know, we can absolutely help manage you through so that you are attractive to developers. Um, so that is all to be determined. And again, I think at the end of the day, you'll have to, um, sort of have a reality check about what it's going to take to make this a productive, um, four acres and, uh, sort of short-term pain for long-term gain, um, in a way that meets all your priorities and goals.
Okay. So what I, I guess where I'm, what I'm trying to get at is and understand a little bit is if you have an 80 to 90-room boutique hotel and a restaurant, those to me are, are economic drivers, right? Those are, those are generating revenue. Um, but that is a public, I'm assuming this would be a public-private partnership. So in that particular case, the private would own the facilities, just not the land. And they would be generating money for the, from sales tax, we would get sales tax from that, um, and lodging taxes from that as well. Um, so do you have, do, just kind of based on general numbers, do you have what that would, would generate look like for a year? Again, I didn't dive into the, the spreadsheet that you presented to see if that number was there, but I'm just kind of curious.
No, we haven't run those and we're happy to, to do that in the next phase. Typically economic and fiscal impact and employment impact, which all of those would be here in spades, um, is part and parcel of our process. So, you know, absolutely something that the city manager and Jeannie and I can talk about including in that, that next step.
Okay. So in, if it's possible, uh, would like, maybe we could see that a restaurant by itself, the boutique by itself, because it seems like you've kind of got it broken up into to kind of phases like that as well. Is that correct?
Well, uh, it, it, it could take several forms. Ultimately, you sort of want all of it to be part and parcel of one development. And so whether the restaurant and/or brewery or distillery are leased out, um, to individuals or, you know, other organizations that come in and leases space, or if it is something that's taken on by, uh, the developer themselves, uh, we've seen it happen both ways. So we sort of assumed at this point that, um, those spaces would be leased, but it is entirely possible that it could be all one thing. But it is, um, all of those things, as you mentioned, you generate, uh, various taxes and that's the public's return on investment, right? So not only is there the ground lease revenue, but then those tax revenues that come off of it. So I think you really do owe yourself that to that analysis to have the full, um, realization of what this, um, investment analysis looks like for you.
Okay. And then, um, the St. Edward's, um, project that's going to be coming online in 2020, do you know how many rooms that's going to have?
Um, yes, uh, that is, and I've got to pull it up here because just bear with me here.
It's about 80.
About 80, okay. Uh, city manager just answered.
It's 50, yeah, $50 million and 70 guest rooms, 12 of which will be suites. Um, they will have, uh, function space, eight meeting rooms and a ballroom. And, uh, it is a very, very expensive per key cost higher than what we're looking at. Uh, but there, there, it's a substantial, uh, public-private partnership there as well.
Okay. And then you had mentioned some generic, um, alternative ideas. Um, is that in the 160-page packet?
Well, we didn't, um, formally test out things like a Hampton Inn or a McDonald's because we knew those would be non-starters. Um, but we, so yeah, we, we didn't do a deep dive on, on things that we just knew would be a waste of everybody, of, of everyone's time. Um, but, but we do sort of speak to it throughout that things that are, um, chains that are easily repeatable across the country. And so they get funded by banks without a second look and they're very easy and profitable to do. Um, but at the same time, I think those kinds of things, um, would be the real gut punch that I feel. Everybody who we spoke with at the kickoff and what I've heard tonight, it's, those would just probably be non-starters. But if, if, if you wanted us to, to do that, we, we could. I just, I think you might agree with me, but I'm, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not looking for McDonald's. I was more, just wondering if those generic ideas included things, um, like community rooms with activity space that could be leased to nonprofits. So if you haven't done that, that's, that's fine, I understand. Um, the massing for.
Oh, the meeting.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, well, as I said before, the, the, the meeting rooms are going to be open and available to rent to anybody who wants to pay the rent to rent them. I mean, that's how any hotel or function facility works. So, and if you wanted to negotiate a deal whereby nonprofits or local groups or different local entities that you feel like need a priority for less dollars, those can, that can be written into the agreement. So all of those, that is part and parcel of the project.
Okay. Um, and then the massing for an 80 to 90-unit boutique hotel, would that look similar to the Anderson School?
You know, um, it, it can really take a lot of massing forms and I think, um, to give you a sense of, again, maybe a generic comparison, most select serve branded hotels like a Hampton Inn are around that 90-key range and they typically are three to four stories. Um, typically that size is going to be more like three. If you go over 100 keys, you might get to four, four stories. Um, and they typically take up two and a half acres for that development, um, on a, you know, side of the highway kind of a thing. So your four acres gives you a little bit of leeway to do some really interesting things, um, as it relates to nature. And, and one thing that I would say about the massing is if we had the massing be taller towards the existing, um, golf club parking lot and sort of taper down as you get closer to the river, um, and then open up into more of a natural setting as you get there, um, and then stair-step your way back as you get to the, the hill and, and the parking, I think that makes it less, um, obtrusive on the, the natural environment there. And there's some really cool trees that you can't save all of them, but there's some real neat, big, old trees there that, you know, you would want the developer to sort of include in the natural landscape of what their plan was.
Um, and you kind of feel that that would fall in line with the view corridor through the, um, off of the front, front there and maintaining that view corridor in the front?
I think, yeah, with creative design, I absolutely think that that is possible. Um, that most of these, this does not have to be a, a massive, uh, sort of view blocker at all.
Okay. And then I guess I could, I'll ask this question to the city manager offline. It's going more in line with the, the RFP process. So it sounds like we're in the first of many phases of, of looking at this. And so I'm still going to have many more questions. Obviously, we're receiving input from the community. You know, being part of the original group and community group that worked so diligently to save the course for our community in perpetuity, the most important thing that I've learned is that we do need to find an economic driver in perpetuity. But my questions are more along the lines of how much is it going to cost us to maintain it today? And how much is it going to cost us to maintain it 30 years from now? And making sure that whatever decisions we make, whether it be boutique hotels, which I'm hearing from the community, that is not something they want, however, we need to look at all options, that we make sure that we make a decision and inform people and communicate with people what it's going to cost, not only today, but into the future. So I'm going to have many more questions, but you've been great. Thank you for the presentation, information, more to come. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you.
First off, thank you for the presentation. So I'm hearing, you know, a lot of angst for, you know, what was presented in this boutique, distillery type of thing. But I think when I was looking at the presentation and, and hearing you present it, I was envisioning more of something as just a, a slightly smaller scale of McMinniman's where there's different types of venues, and it is, it's family-friendly as well. I was envisioning people using, you know, the Wayne land and everything, and then coming back towards the highway and the parking and being able to get food and beverage or gathering there as an option as well. So I was, I was envisioning it as able to be community gathering or, or like the hangar where it's a focal point, especially with the many crossroads, the trail itself, 522. So I was, I was thinking that we really do need to have this economic, economic engine for the park and preserving it. We've had lots of discussions with the structural deficit and the budget. And I think the, the last thing we really need is blowing a bigger hole in our long-term finances and everything. So I, I think this is a key to shoring up our budget. And our long-term outlook right now is finding a way to preserve and maintain the Wayne property as we're going forward. So I, I think this was a, a great step forward and a first step in many here in identifying what's best. And so, you know, this is the first presentation of it. We'll get the feedback from the community at large. You know, it sounded like we had lots of input into it from lots of different focus groups, different entities. So I think we're, you know, starting off in a good process with this. And I think if we just keep moving down that path, we'll come and really find what the community wants. And really just avoiding a cookie cutter or some corporation there is, I think, the last thing that the community wants and giving something that fits in there, reflects the nature, the Smamish River there, is what it needs and just being able to protect the land, maintain the land. So, thank you. I did have one follow-up question for it. So in some of the, I think it was the triple door there, there was a little bit of a study. It looked like the ticket prices was analyzed in there, but was food and beverage taken into account with those types of venues?
He's referring to the entertainment venues?
Yeah. So I think those are certainly ancillary, and depending on the ki, kind of venue, food and beverage can absolutely make or break a venue. So I, the answer is yes, if those things were considered. It wasn't just done on sort of a hard nose, will the tickets make this thing profitable or not profitable? It was sort of the overall look. So I would say the answer is yes, that was considered. I would also say, I don't think you shouldn't have entertainment. We just don't think it should, there should be a dedicated entertainment venue as part of this, but there could be entertainment spaces or entertainment occurred. We just don't want the P and L to rely upon that for viability.
Yeah, I think that came across pretty clear that, you know, the last thing we need is a concert venue or any, anything along those lines, because, yeah, there's plenty of them closer to urban centers and the people that would be attending it already. So, but I think that was all I had, and thank you again.
If I could just respond to your comments about the public input. So in addition to the three meetings that the consultant held here in council chambers and all of the interviews that he did afterwards on the telephone, Rob is going to come back to town. We're working on a date right now. But part of the contract is that he comes back to town and he does two more public meetings to present the results. You are the first to see these results and folks who obviously found that, you know, the packet online. I wanted you all to see it first and to comment. And then we're going to take it back. We're going to have two meetings, one in midday, so, and then one in the evening, so we can hopefully hit all, all audiences and come in and give us, give us their feedback.
Yeah. And I think it's always easier to have, you know, something to criticize or, you know, really focus on and generate ideas or spin off new ideas, really instead of just having this vague notion, just because otherwise other ideas were swill around, swirl around. But I think now that we have this information, people can digest it, come back. And so that's good news that it's already on the books or scheduled to be on the books. So, thank you.
Okay. I, thank you for the presentation. Obviously, a lot of thought went into it. I echo a lot of the comments made by my fellow council members. In particular, you know, I, I like to think of myself as a practical person, and I, I obviously attended the, the session when we discussed some of these options. And I had a similar kind of gut check. But, you know, we know, we know that we have to have an economic driver here. And we know that a recession's coming, and we know that our sales tax is down, and we know the structural deficit. And so I, I think, for me, I, I'm trying to remain open and look at the positives. I, you know, I like going to the Salish Lodge. I like it a lot. I can't afford it. But having one in the backyard, you know, maybe, maybe that's not so bad. I, I think my biggest concern was when I see the three to eight million dollar funding gap, because I don't know what that means. But it sounds like it means that Bothell has to pony up some of that money. That's a big concern for me. And I, and I, I don't profess to be a business person, but I wonder what that actually means for us and what it means in terms of, of we put money in, what's the return on investment for the city. I would like to see those numbers because I think that would maybe alleviate some of that concern. I, I also appreciated the, the, the comments about the massing because I did wonder, how many stories is this going to be? And where's the parking going to go? Because if the parking is in-ground parking next to the river, is that going to work? And does that make it two stories higher? And so lots of those practical questions kind of have run through my mind. I did want to ask, when we talk about a $2.5 million profit, is that a reasonable starting point for, for first year of profit for that size of a facility? Does anyone know? Is Rob still there?
Yeah, I'm still here. And so ultimately, any developer is going to, you know, really just hope to break even in that first year as they ramp up. But what they're really going to look at is the five, seven, and 10-year return on investment. So they need to be able to pay their debt service to the bank with a strong probability of success with a lot of what we call debt service coverage. And then they're going to want to have excess profit to be able to then pay themselves back for the equity that they put in. We, just to give you some context, when we're looking at convention hotels as necessary elements to a sort of convention venue or a conference center like in Lynnwood, we're typically the national average of the facilities that we study just for that type of a project, which is different than what we're talking about here. But just to give you a sense of proportion, 35% is the average gap, feasibility gap. So if you have a $100 million convention hotel that's needed, 35 million of that needs to be ponied up, as you say, by the public sector to get that off the ground. But it's necessary to make the whole thing work. And over time, it, it, there's a positive ROI for all involved. But it takes that upfront, prime the pump. This is a much, much smaller percentage of the total that, at least that we're showing, about 10 to 15% of a gap, which is not too shabby when you're talking about this level of investment. I mean, this is, this would be a major, major investment. You could certainly dumb it down and dilute it down and do something less compelling and have a lesser investment in it. So those are choices that you can absolutely make. But this is, again, what we felt was going to be your long-term best bet.
I appreciate that. And, you know, I, I share my other council members' sort of vision that it would be more community-focused. I think the reality is, a community center, as much as I'd love one there, I think it's not at the heart of the community. So maybe that's not the best place, because then teenagers are not maybe going to walk, and it should be somewhere more centrally focused. But I totally understand the, the wanting to have that be a really community-focused location or, or gathering space. And so it sounds like, you know, I think we're all trying to come to grips with maybe what our hopes and dreams were and what the realities are. And I'm sure the public will weigh in and tell us what they think. But I think it's the responsible thing to look at what, what is the highest and best use for this property, because we know we have fiscal challenges and we, we are stewards of this land, and how do we best take care of it? And we're stewards of Bothell, and how do we best take care of Bothell? And this is a, this is an opportunity to maybe kill two, two or more birds with one stone. And so I, I look forward to having future conversations, and I'm sure the public will let us know what they think. Uh, city manager?
So this is great, because this is exactly what the feasibility study is supposed to do, is, is generate the conversation and start the conversation about what our next steps are with regards to this property. So to me, this has been a really successful first milestone. I've heard sort of a split opinion about sort of next steps. I can't recommend unless you're all in, moving forward with an RFP for a developer at this point. That was the point of this, was to hear sort of where your thoughts were. If, if there's a hesitancy to have developers go through the process of developing proposals, and we're not there yet as a council and as a community, I think it's too early. So sort of it's, this is, I think, one of those situations where you pushed and you pushed and you pushed because you wanted to see what this economic engine was for, and it was on the top of my to-do list from you as part of your goals, get it out, get it out, you know, get something going so we can generate the revenue. But now that the reality is here, it's kind of a little bit of a, huh. So I think maybe we just need to slow this down. We can absolutely contract with a consultant. We don't have the in-house staff expertise to do this, but to go ahead and contract to do an assessment of a community center. Because I think if that's something that you're interested in seeing, you should see what those numbers look like, and you should see the cost of not having any lease revenue of building a building. We're heavily, we have a heavy debt service in this community, and we're going to add another $35 million with two fire stations. So we should really look at what, how would, how would we do that? How would we borrow? What would be the revenue that would be needed to pay a building back, to build a community center? And, and have you take a look at that and, and hold this up for six more months and go through that process and bring that back? Because I think that's really good information for you and the community to have, and maybe that generates a different choice. There's, there's always choices, and there's another levy choice, if that's what the community would like to have, and they'd like to have a community center, and they're willing to tax themselves to be able to do that. I think that's really important information for you to have. You also have to remember that a project like that isn't just the revenue that it generates itself, it's the whole idea of the economic engine. McMinniman's is a perfect example of that. It has those rooms. The community can rent those rooms, there's rooms available. And so it, it had sort of that mix of community and kids and, and all of those things. And that's what we were striving for, you know, in, in our vision for this property. But it's the jobs and it's the, the impact that those individuals have. They come, they stay the night at McMinniman's. They don't just patronize McMinniman's, they wander out and patronize the other businesses and the other retail in the area. And so it's a much broader than just, you'd have to do a really large economic impact on a project like that if you really want to see the impacts that it could have on our community. But that would be my recommendation at this point, is to, is to provide you more information down the community side of, of, of a potential project.
Should we just show, a show of hands, who wants to spend the resources on the feasibility of a community center?
So it would be from, from general, it would be from your general fund, unrestricted general fund reserves. You would be, I can't imagine it's less than $50,000 or $75,000 to do something like that. Maybe, maybe 50? I don't know.
Anyone who's interested in doing that, go ahead and raise your hand. Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So when do we, are they going to be coming back and doing more of a community engagement process? Are they going to, can we do that before we do the study?
Hunnens, yes, they're coming back. I think we're trying to schedule it sometime in November.
So could we have them come back first before we do the study? Is that possible?
Oh, absolutely. Anything that's, we can report back, what the feedback was from the two community events and bring this up again.
That might give us a little more information, maybe.
Go ahead.
I guess what I have to say is, when we went, started with a pros plan to go out to the community and get input from them, we ended up with 4% of our younger generation actually, you know, putting input in. So I'm concerned that we've had the opportunity for our younger generation to be able to say something. They aren't going to come to some of these meetings. So if our outreach could go a little bit beyond, you know, something out to, to our younger generation, I think that's something I would request. And let me tell you, private story, but whatever, I ran a wedding and event center for 30 years. I never really cared if I made a great profit, but what I did care about was that I paid my bills, that we maintained the place, and that our community was happy. And that this is something they valued. And I guess that's what I look at Wayne four acres, Wayne land. You know, we started way back when, and we got a million dollars from the Washington State Legislature to really start this process. How many people were involved in saying, we're part of one Bothell, we want this land? Do they want a hotel, or a brewery, or a winery? I, I don't think that's the community feeling, but I think it's, we, we need, at least we need to ask them the question. And I'm, maybe a little broader ask than the people that show up at those, at the meetings in City Hall. That's my interpretation. So.
Councilmembers, orange.
My, my only concern is, do people have stomach more for more taxes? I mean, we've had this discussion recently about, do people have more, you know, more of a stomach for more taxes? And that's what this is, that's what this is. So I, my druthers are is that we go the next step with the consultants that we're working with, find ways to engage the public to come in, but make it, you know, really clear that a community center, which would be lovely, how do we do a public-private partnership? Because if it's on Wayne land, it sounds like it's all on us. And that's going to be, it, it's great to have young people come in and be a part of it, but they will be inheriting a tax. But they will be inheriting a tax or leaving a tax legacy because voters, and at some point, they're going to have to pay the price for it. Or the people of Bothell are gonna have to pay the price for it.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, I think we need to follow through with this, have some more meetings, see what the public wants, see what the public's ideas of this are. You know, and then go on from there. If the public wants something that's revenue generating, let's do something revenue generating. Does it have to be 80 rooms? No, it probably could be 40. You know, we get half the return, but half the return. If our idea is the return's gonna pay for the upkeep of most of our parks, and it'll help dramatically with that, you know. Let's just follow this through, see where it takes us, and then make our decisions from there. I would love a community center. I don't think that's in the cards. You know, I don't think the citizens are gonna say, yeah, I'll take another levy. Oh, sure, I don't mind if you tax me a little bit more. I want a community center. I don't think that's in the cards at all. Does it have, do we have to put the community center on? Or can we have something similar to this that's just downscaled a little bit, that still has a banquet room that's big enough to where people can use that for their weddings and meetings and things along those lines? You know, let's go down that road when we have to go down that road.
Councilmember Olson.
Yeah, I think I'm feeling the same way that we need to finish the process. This was the first look at it. I think we need to share it, spread it around. But I'd be in favor of, you know, barring anything wildly different that we finish the process and then move forward with the RFP along these lines and see what developers, what the process brings back from those and see, you know, what proposals and what ideas are out there. Because that's what really matters, is what they think can be profitable and what can be built and kind of their visions. Because we can guide it, but it's they who will build it and run it and make it successful because there will have to be some passion on their side, especially if it's not a big corporation. But if it's some smaller entity, I mean, hopefully it's, you know, someone that's invested in it. You know, it's someone like the McMinimans that it's their heart and soul and passion. And, you know, if that comes to Bothell and, you know, creates a community over there, that'd be great. I mean, I think long-term, a community center, you know, maybe in more of the heart, you know, that some of these properties that we have out here, you know, is a good potential for those in the future. But I think, you know, the deputy mayor said it that this is, you know, might be too remote, too removed from the heart of Bothell, you know, especially from the north end of the town that it would be, you know, it's almost a Kenmore, Bothell Community Center at that point instead of, you know, a Bothell Community Center for all. So, yeah, let's finish the process. And then hopefully, we can move forward with the RFP. Because I think everyone was clear that, yes, we wanna move forward. And we were pushing Jennifer to get this done. And she has brought it done. And we have Jeannie now. And we're seeing what kind of returns that she's bringing in and the community connections. So I think it's all paying off. You know, and then earlier with our legislative gamble that we took, I think that paid off really well. So I like, it was all kind of meshing together tonight where we're thinking big and going for these little bit of gambles. But we've been pretty successful and it's been paying off. So I think, you know, we kind of keep going down that avenue and keep moving forward.
I agree. I think we should continue to move forward and maybe get a better handle on what the numbers look like. And I think, you know, part of the community outreach has to be a really candid conversation about money. The community wanted us to save this land. And we didn't know how we were gonna do it. But now we have to take care of it. And we have budget issues that we need to deal with. And I think I trust the public when they know the options and they know what's at stake, that they will understand we can't be Santa Claus. So thank you for all your hard work, Rob. And we look forward to future conversations and maybe refining the vision a little bit and getting some idea of what the economic realities are. So.
Absolutely, happy to do it. And honestly, I'm so glad that you're all having this conversation based in the reality of the numbers. Because as I've mentioned to Jeannie and others before, we have many clients that pretend we don't tell them that part and then cast their net for a developer. And they're absolutely shocked and frustrated when the developer comes and says, this needs to be a partnership with incentives, et cetera, et cetera. So having this difficult conversation now is going to save you so much time and effort down the road. So I would say, go forth and conquer on this. And we're happy to continue to be a resource for you.
So I just wanna make sure that we're clear. So we're gonna do the two public meetings, one in the day, one in the evening with Hunnens. We're gonna bring that feedback back to you because any additional analysis, any additional, that's an additional contract with him. So I won't have anything other than community, the community feedback for you at the next touch. There won't be any additional economic analysis. There won't be any additional information. Only the community feedback. Because I'm not sure that I'm hearing direction to sort of take it to the next step of doing an economic assessment yet.
Well, maybe we need to weigh in. Shall we say whether or not we wanna move forward with finding out what the numbers are? I mean, I heard at least two of us, but I wasn't paying really close attention. Do you wanna raise your hands if you wanna continue moving forward and getting more specific numbers from the consultant? I'm just trying to figure out, you need answers, right?
Yes, I'm asking for clarity.
So I was in favor of having them do their community engagement process.
I too would like the community engagement process before we move forward.
Okay.
And I would like to continue the engagement process. I just hope that it's gonna reach out far enough to include many more voices, particularly our younger generation.
So the grant is only for those two? That's all it is? So I just wanna make sure that.
Right, but then how do we do the outreach so that people will come?
So again, the contract is for a certain amount of services. And so we can try to do a little bit more. But we have limited staff. The contract is limited. So we'll do the best we can within the resources that we have.
I'll weigh in last. Go ahead, Councilmember Zorn.
I'm in agreement with my colleagues across the aisle here.
Aisle. Councilmember Olson.
Same, you know, finishing the process, seeing what the community results are. I mean, I think the economic analysis, you know, will still be fairly high level. And until we do the RFP process, we're not gonna really get into what realities of it are. Because we're still, you know, just hypothetical situations, you know, continuing with that. So I still think, finish the process and then move on with the RFP, you know, unless there's a dramatic outcry, otherwise.
Okay. I just was, I guess my concern was, without real numbers, how do we have that conversation with the community about what we're gaining, what we're giving up and what we're gaining? If we don't, if we can't share with them what potential sales tax is, what potential lodging tax is, what potential ground lease there is, how do they, how do they tell us what they think? And how do they respond to? I mean, we've had trouble kind of wrapping our minds around this. And I'm just afraid if we don't have answers as far as what the economic gain is, how are they gonna make a decision and be able to have an informed opinion?
Well, and it's very dependent upon the project. So that's part of the RFP process. So again, a very public process to go out and have developers look at this property and determine, you know, what kind of project they could. And again, you have to remember that it has to be, it has to be a financially viable project. There's lots of really cool ideas. But a developer is not going to make a proposal on anything that doesn't pencil. So you could reduce it by 40 rooms. But the whole point of this is to tell you, a 40-room hotel is not gonna make it. And so that's sort of the next step. We can hypothetically come up with things and show the community what we hypothetically think projects are gonna generate. But it's really those proposals that come forward and say, this is the public contribution as part of the public-private partnership. This is the project. This is what it would generate. And you compare an 80-room hotel project and the revenue generated from that in comparison to something else. And maybe it's a generic hotel. That's what gives the community the opportunity to compare. What I'm worried about is the comparison of the community that's sort of the dream out there isn't gonna be there. And so it's gonna be sort of this void in the discussion and sort of this conspiracy theory again of, well, they didn't even look at it. They didn't even, how do we know? How do we know? Well, we inherently know, because we've experienced it in our careers, that community centers are financial obligations for cities. They do not make money. But that's okay if a community decides that that's something that's important. So you're missing this piece of information. And that's all I'm asking the council is, are you prepared to have the conversation without that missing piece? And I don't know.
Rob, did you have an additional comment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the impact analysis, the return, sorry, I take this off speaker. The return on investment analysis, since we've already done the other modeling, it's only really another $5,000. If you wanted to approve something like that, for us to go ahead and just do that economic, fiscal, and employment impact analysis based on this particular model, it's a pretty small add. And I feel like it is pretty critical to the conversation that you're having in terms of investment and return for the community. So I wanted to put that out there so you're not thinking that it's another huge study to get those numbers.
That's really helpful, actually. You wanna go around again and say how you feel about that now?
I like that idea a lot.
Ask a question, though, I guess. So for additional $5,000, what are we going to be gaining? I'm not clear.
So you would be receiving basically the modeling that shows the new day trip and overnight spending and the net new spending to Bothell that then translates into supported jobs and earnings as well as new fiscal benefits to the city, sales taxes, hotel taxes, any other localized taxes. So you would have spending, jobs, earnings, and taxes. All those benefits would be shown and modeled over, say, a 30-year timeframe, but you would have it broken down year by year. So it's just a helpful conversation because we've shown you the return on investment for the private sector. We have not shown you that return on investment for the public sector. And I think that's so critical to your conversation.
I agree. And it's just on this project that you've proposed, is that correct?
Which is highest and best use.
Correct.
So best case scenario.
It is. Although, yeah, but then, once we have that model structured, let's say then we go out and do the whole RFQP process for developers and they come back with sort of modulated versions of the same thing. Those impact scenarios could be part of what is in our next phase of work to basically modify that so that you're not having to spend $5,000 every time. It's just, this sets up a nice base model from which we can show you what this one would do. And then as, you know, in another nine months or however long it takes to get to the end of that process with developers, which is about what it takes, then you have something, a basis, a model already, a foundation to work on so that it's not starting from scratch.
I'm in favor of going forward.
I as well.
Just one question. Our budget can take the 5K? Okay, then I'm in favor as well.
Yes, Councilmember Agnew.
I'm sorry, go again. Can we also, since we're gonna do the analysis on revenue, is it possible to see that against the costs of what it is to maintain the property? So when we're looking at what revenue it can generate, what is it costing us to actually maintain it? And I would actually like to see that not only in today's dollars, but in future dollars as well. So that when we're looking at this, if you understand.
I think we can.
I just wondered if, are we on the hook for that since it's a ground lease, not a building lease?
No, I think he's talking about the 84 acres. Am I correct?
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Yes, we can try to put them in together.
If you can give us, yeah, if you can give us a plug number for what you estimate that support to cost on the 84 acres or the other 89 acres, then that's a relatively easy add.
Great. I think you have your answer, City Manager.
So we're gonna come back with the feedback from the community, from the two events, and the economic impact study for $5,000. We'll have both of those at the next time that we come before you with this item. Okay?
Fantastic.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
No.
Do we have the dates that are gonna, those two meetings are gonna take place?
No.
Okay, so if you would, if you'd let us know, then.
Oh, of course. Yes, it will be broadcast.
We will broadcast it to the skies.
Far and wide, yes.
Okay, are we done? Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Great evening. Take care. Bye-bye.
Hey, it's 8:07. Should we take a break to 15? Do I need a motion for that? Okay, great, let's just do it.
November 7th, Thursday.
Should we take a break to 15?
So we're going to come back with the feedback from the community, from the two events, and the economic impact study for $5,000. We'll have both of those at the next time that we come before you with this item. Okay?
Fantastic.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
No.
Can, do we have the dates that are going, those two meetings are going to take place?
No.
Okay, so if you would, if you'd let us know, then.
Oh, of course. Yes, it will be broadcast.
We will broadcast it to the skies.
Far and wide, yes.
Okay, are we done? Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Great evening. Take care. Bye-bye.
Hey, it's 8:07. Should we take a break to 15? Do I need a motion for that? Okay, great, let's just do it.
November 7th, Thursday. I'll make sure it's.
November 7th, Thursday. I'll make sure it's. Okay. Do we know who's presenting?
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. I have Tracy Perkowski here. She is the expert in this matter, so I thought she would give the most efficient and effective presentation to you this evening as far as what's been going on with our human services grants and the recommendations that we're bringing you tonight. We're doing so because we are on a timeline in order to get grants out for 2020 for the So we feel this is a timely decision for council. But there is a lot to consider, and the Human Services Subcommittee met last week, and this is the recommendation that's coming from them. So I'll turn it over to Tracy to give a little bit of background and walk you through some of the information and the recommendation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Assistant City Manager Missoli. Some good evening. Tonight, I'm here to you, I'm here with you to present some information on the 2020 Human Services Grant Recommendations. And while I am the speaker for this evening, this has been a collaborative project among three of us for the past several months, including the Assistant City Manager and also Catherine Jansen from the Executive Office. And so it's really been a privilege to work with the two of them for these past couple months and help out with a little bit of expertise because this is an area that you don't normally hear me talk about. Normally, you hear me talk about everything parks and recreation. But for over the last 10 years, the council has designated an amount of funds from the general fund to be allocated towards grants to support services providers that deliver social and supportive services with the goal of improving the quality of life for the individuals and families that those organizations serve. $356,000 is budgeted as part of the 2020 budget. And so I want to start first with just a little bit of background to talk to the entire council about how we got here. We've spent a good amount of time with the council Subcommittee, but just for, as a whole. So in 2018, the council asked for additional information on the impact of human services and those grant dollars, what that impact was on Bothel residents. So in early 2019, staff reviewed the existing process and issued an RFP for Grants Management Services and a third-party provider to do those grant management services and a community needs assessment. Unfortunately, no responses were received. And therefore, in the spring, the committee asked staff to research and analyze a few options for moving forward. And those included the potential for a navigator-type position, to solicit feedback from the current grantees, and to take another long look at the program itself. And so during the summer, the staff members spent quite a bit of time with a cross-section of our current grantees as well as assessing our current grant program. And this information was shared with the council committee last Tuesday night, and they reviewed the feedback that was provided in a written report that talked about how to create some efficiencies for the staff and the grantees, also how to reduce some of the administrative and the cost burden on the grantees itself so that more dollars could go directly towards service providing rather than administrative costs. And after a very thoughtful discussion, the committee provided staff with some recommendations for 2020. And I'm going to delve a little bit deeper into those in just a minute. But first, I'd like to say that as part of those conversations that we had with those grantees, I want you to know that the grantees are very thankful for the support that you provide them and for the community. And they also have a real understanding of why you took some time this past year to take a look at the program and really review its impact on Bothel residents, and they're very supportive of that effort. So while we talked extensively with the Subcommittee, I'm going to give you a really high-level view of the report outcomes that we provided to the committee. And one of the key outcomes from the past couple of months is that a needs assessment is really urgently needed. So our current grantees requested a copy of it. When staff meets with various nonprofits in the community, one of the first questions we hear is, do you have a needs assessment and can we have a copy of it? The committee asked for a copy of it as part of last year's grant awards. The council as a whole is wondering, what exactly are the needs of Bothel community to make sure that our dollars are targeted? And in addition, the grantees expressed a desire to have a needs assessment so that they too could help shape their programs to serve the needs of Bothel and make sure that the limited dollars that you're providing to them are also having the greatest impact. And so we're proposing doing a needs assessment in 2020 and separating it out into a single RFP versus how it was bundled in the beginning of the year. And we're confident that this task can be completed next year. The committee recommends using $50,000 in funds from the 2020 Human Services Budget for this needs assessment or for program analysis such as drafting some of the needed policies on reimbursement insurance requirements. And these were some of those administrative burden items that I alluded to just a few moments ago. And this is, again, going to help make the program have a greater impact on the residents of Bothel. The needs assessment is going to cover some historically funded areas such as senior services, domestic violence, homelessness, and English-language services. It's also going to explore trends in housing, transportation, and employment. Those are key drivers of the needs for human services. It'll also review what services are currently provided by King and Snohomish Counties. And also, what is that other funding that's out there? What exactly is that funding? For example, the recent levy passed by King County for the veteran seniors and human services levy. And so we do recommend moving forward with that needs assessment and if any funds are left over, to, again, use those for some of those internal program efficiencies. The other key outcome of the report from our summer's worth of work is the status of the 2020 grant awards. And Assistant City Manager Missoli alluded to this, which is organizations are seeking information on the awards process because they're used to two-year grants. Last year, we broke that process and did a one-year grant. So they're used to getting funding for two years. They're also used to filling out those application process earlier in the calendar year. And one of the things we heard from our grantees is that this time of year becomes really challenging for them. There are lots of fundraising galas and that push towards end-of-the-year dollars. And for the smaller organizations, their staff is taking time off for holidays. And so the more information we can provide them on a grants process and grant awards in autumn, the better. And that's really the reason why we're here tonight with the recommendation. And so since our previous practice was for two years, and the city has very limited time right now to solicit new applications, review them, push them back to the committee, the committee makes the recommendations, come back to council with a full recommendation. And not having that needs assessment to really make that connection of where the limited dollars could be best used, the committee is recommending using the remaining $306,000 that's available for 2020 by extending the current awards for the folks who received money in 2019. And they would receive nearly 86% of the previous year's awards. And that full list of award recipients and the proposed dollar amounts is the attachment one. That was the AB for the packet this evening. And so in closing, staff's recommended action is based on that of what the committee told us last Thursday. And here's the nice bureaucratic part of it. To approve the recommended grants to provide human services for 2020 and authorize the distribution of those funds totaling $306,000 via grant contracts negotiated by the city manager and allow the city manager to direct the remaining $50,000 to perform a needs assessment or analysis for future program improvements. So with that, if you have any questions, either myself or the Assistant City Manager would be happy to help you.
Who has questions? Bueller? I mean, Councilmember Resort.
Question slash comments?
Yeah, absolutely.
So the $50,000 to do the needs assessment is already part of what we've budgeted for this?
Yes.
So, and the rest of it's going to fund about 86%, as I am understanding that right, of the, what we've been currently funding to tide them over while we figure out what real needs are?
Exactly.
Okay, so it seems exceedingly sensible to me. So I have no arguments or questions about it. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
So I just wanted to be really clear about the fact that the University of Washington Evans School might do this assessment and then the $50,000 would be used for?
That's correct.
Yeah, and would you identify exactly then what the $50,000 would be used for?
So what the committee talked about was that staff did submit an application to the University of Washington Evans School for their student consulting lab to potentially help us out and be the consultant on that project. If that's the case, we estimate that cost to be around $2,500. It's actually $1,850 for the students themselves, although there's going to be some ancillary expenses. The additional funds outside of that will be used to create those program efficiencies and to help reduce that administrative burden on our grantees. And so those are insurance requirements, redrafting our contract, those kinds of things. But what's important there is that they need written policies and procedures to be able to pass audit muster and also to satisfy our risk management requirements. And by being able to use those funds, if they're available in 2020, if we're accepted into the student lab programming, that actually pushes the enhancements and the efficiencies of our human services grant program earlier so that there are greater benefits to the not-for-profits who receive the funds. And again, more funds than can be used for direct service. And so it really becomes a win-win for the community. And so we're hoping to be able to work with the students if we're accepted and then also be able to use that for a staff time or an intern or something like that to push forward the program.
And would you kind of just tell us when we would maybe know that final decision from the Evans School?
Application was submitted last month, and the program starts in December, so we hear sometime early to mid-November.
So just so everyone knows, the Subcommittee's Councilmember McAuliffe, Councilmember McNeil, and myself, and Councilmember Agnew's the alternate. I think it's really important, I think the committee agreed to know what problem we're trying to solve. And so that's why we agreed that as a committee, we wanted to move forward with the needs assessment because otherwise, we're just taking a stab in the dark where we're putting our money and where the best use of it is. So it seemed fairly obvious to us that we needed to do this. So does anyone else have any questions? Councilmember Agnew?
I have a motion.
Excellent. Does make sure. No one else has anything to say? Okay.
I approve the recommended grants to provide human services for the 2020 and authorize
And I'm not sure that that is our intention for a single-family home, is to be like a podment under a single-family roof. There's no living room, no family room. It's all bedrooms, sharing baths, and a kitchen. And it has us scratching our head on, is that really our intention for a single-family home? It's all unrelated people living with the parameters of they have not exceeded five people. It's what code says, right? So anyway, just wanted to put it out there because it's got, I'm not sure that that was our intention, but maybe we're fine with it. Anyway, so that's one.
Can I weigh in?
Yeah.
I'm torn because we talk about affordable housing constantly, and I just don't know.
Is it better?
I don't know what to think.
So at some point, do we want to define what a single-family home is?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what.
And we want people to be able to sub-rent rooms, right?
Well, and what's their alternative? Homelessness? I don't know. I mean, I don't know. I just, that's a hard.
Or be in a house where it's rented to two or three people and you still have a living room intact and that sort of thing. I don't know.
I don't know. Are you starting to feel the effects in the neighborhood?
Oh, very much so.
I'd say that's where it really starts.
And is it going to be a trend? You know, is it going to be a trend that we're going to, you know, if we're fine with, then we're fine with it. But if we're not fine with it, then how do we deal with it?
You said it's five? So it's under code? I mean, the code is six?
Five unrelated, I think it is. Is it six? Okay. It's an interesting situation.
Yeah.
So this became apparent with like, you know, a multitude of vehicles or?
Oh, yeah. They're fine folks. I mean, they're all trying to live, mesh in, but you know, you have five people and they all have guests. And it's in a single-family home. You know, we talk about duplexes. We've got parking requirements for duplexes and triplexes. And what do we do when we have up to six unrelated people in a residential home sharing a driveway that was designed differently? Anyway, it's not a problem to solve. It's just, you know, be aware that, you know, housing is starting to change what it looks like. And at what point do we want to deal with it?
Yeah, people are trying to get creative and do what they can, so yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was already illegal for a certain number of people to live in a home that were not related. Is that my understanding, my correct?
A maximum of six.
Yeah, so how does that relate to what you're talking about? We already have seven houses.
Well, this situation, they closed in the living room, made it a bedroom. And so now we have something that's like an appodment, you know, where you have in apartments, appodments where you have bedrooms that are all sharing a single family, sharing a single kitchen and bathroom. And there's no living area. So now we have something that's technically a single-family home, but it's not, the internals, guts of it is not a single-family home. There's no gathering area aside from the kitchen.
Sorry, can I get a little clarity on the knowledge that you just gave us about six people in a home that are related and beyond?
Unrelated.
Or not related. Yeah.
This is council conversation, so I'm not prepared to.
Oh, gotcha.
So I don't expect any solutions. I just thought that, you know, you all might want to be aware that this may be a growing trend.
Okay, so if I'm understanding, you've got a single-family home, you've got six bedrooms in a home, one roof, and there are six people unrelated living in the home. And is that what you're saying?
Well, in this situation, it's five.
Okay, so there's five.
But you can have six. But you can have six.
So you have six.
Right.
Okay, and so are you, we want to, are you saying we want to, you're concerned about how we're moving forward without an appodments?
Are we turning homes into a version of an appodment where there's no gathered living area? You know, what is your definition of a single-family residence home? Bedrooms, bathrooms, living room slash family room, kitchen? Or is it just kitchen, bathroom, bedrooms?
So I know in just in our community where I live, we, you're not allowed to have renters. So there's, we have CCNRs and things that we have to follow within our community. If somebody owns a home, and let's say, for instance, I own a home and it's in a nice neighborhood and I'm able to rent it, I don't have any restrictions on being able to rent my home out. But as a landlord, I want to be able to rent the home to five single women that may even have kids, or maybe three single women that have kids. So there's three independent, non-related people with one or two or three children, or two children, whatever it's going to be. My math is not that good right now. But what I'm saying is, that to me is creating an affordable housing element for the community in that particular case. Because they're unrelated, but they have to have
Oh, I agree.
More than one or two people that are actually paying the rent to live there.
Well, there's all kinds of scenarios where people do that, right?
So I guess my, the question I would have is, I don't believe we're creating that, but if we are through something that we've done, I'd like to hear more about that. But I don't think we've done anything differently than any other municipality's been doing to create affordable housing.
So it may be a trend that, you know, we may choose to address or not address. But single-family homes, I mean, what is the definition of a single-family home? Single-family home may be going away. The definition of a single-family home may be going away as far as a detached, single-family home.
Well, so as an example, ADUs, you can have a single-family home, and we're trying to create an ADU element. The ADU might be an affordable ADU.
Right.
Right? So you still have a single-family home, but you have a detached ADU on the same property.
Right. I'm just saying. Might want to, you know, at some point, a definition of what a single-family residential home looks like may or may not be important.
Yeah, and you're kind of worried about the slippery slope if this becomes prevalent or just more common.
Right. So anyway, so that's one item. Second one is, some of you may have replied to this. I just got a phone call and an email from an email that came to us, and she said, "Would any more of your council members like to go?" So I'm just telling you, in your email, if you haven't noticed, there's, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, there was an invite for East Side Community Forum on homelessness and poverty. And it will be on Monday, October 28th, from 6:45 to 9:00 in Redmond. So that's not that far away. They're going to have people from Catholic Community Services, Hope Inc., Congregations for the Homeless, Sophia Way, and Friends of Youth. They're going to be discussing about what it means to be homeless and in poverty, identifying short-term programs for specific populations, and scheduling additional forums evidently are coming up as well. So, you know, if you missed it and you're interested, go check your email. And I've done my part of passing.
I was going to say, I'm going to something different on Saturday.
There's like two things.
It sounds remarkably similar.
There's two things that came out that are very similar, and this is a different one.
Okay, so if anyone wants to carpool to the one on Saturday, I'm going. But I probably won't stay for all five hours or whatever it is.
Okay. And then the last one is, we got a letter from Federal Way, the City of Federal Way. And I'm trying to understand it. They sent, it looks like they sent emails to maybe all the cities in King County asking about concerns they had with SCA making a policy decision about creating a King County Regional Homeless Authority without any input from their city. So I guess my question is, has anybody been tracking that? And has something been made to make them part of that conversation? Just with the follow-up, that's all I'm asking.
So we've had many, many conversations from Regional Policy Committee on this. This is the one that's between King County and the City of Seattle. So you've heard me speak that SCA has some concerns of the structure of how that's being put together, and all 38 cities at PIC have been discussing this as well. So I'm not sure why Federal Way is?
I'm not sure either because the board's talked about it and the mayor of Federal Way is on the board. So I think it's, the issue is the governance structure because they're thinking about forming a committee on homelessness that basically squeezes out SCA cities.
Okay.
And so there's concern that we wouldn't be able to weigh in and wouldn't have the opportunity to have an actual voice in the process.
Okay, so has this been resolved with them as far as you know?
No, we're going to, the RPC will be talking about it again tomorrow. The structure, the way the structure is set up right now is if SCA will have one seat on that committee, currently the way the structure is set, and then if 20 cities sign on in support of it, they'll get a second seat on that committee. But there's additional conversation that's going to take place tomorrow to RPC in the caucus for PIC or for RPC. And then when we go to PIC after the RPC meeting tomorrow night, we will be discussing it again. So I will bring you feedback
Okay.
On what I find from that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's it.
You're up.
All right, I'd like to talk about an event that's going to happen at Bothell High School in October. I'm really sorry because I don't have my council phone with me tonight, so I'll have to text you the dates. But what it is, is it's called Nick of Time. And I've talked about this before. Nick of Time is a nonprofit foundation formed by a family who lost their son in a football game while he had a heart attack. And Nick of Time now comes to schools and they teach kids CPR, they teach them how to use a defibrillator, they encourage the schools to have defibrillators on the fields and in every classroom and every, not every classroom, sorry, every hallway available for people to use. They also do some monitoring of the students with physicians regarding their health, the health of their hearts. And some of these kids end up going to the echo chamber, which they provide at the school as well. And out of 200 kids, they will send for about four to their heart doctor in order for them to have an analysis. So this actually, Nick of Time provides this in schools, and it really saves kids' lives because what happens is, I'll never forget the story of the lady who formed this. Her son's name was Nick. And she said, "I did everything I could possibly do for him. I took him cupcakes for his birthday to school, got him ready for his football games. I never imagined that one day he would go out in the field and that he would have a heart attack. I mean, done, be gone." So I will text you the dates in October. It's two times, it'll be at Bothell High School. And I hope you'll help me spread the word to people because it's not just for Bothell High School kids. They want all kids to come and participate. And they usually do about 200 to 300 kids. So I think it's really important for us to help them, which is what they ask, spread the word. So, sorry, I don't have the dates, but I will send it to you. And then again, I just have to take this opportunity to mention the North Shore Parks and Rec Service Area Proposition 1 on the ballot for the Senior Center in November. So don't anybody think that it's about parks. It's about saving our senior center, repairing and doing maintenance on it that is 30 years in delay. Correct? And I want to thank our city manager because from what Brooke Knight at the Senior Center would say, the director, thanks to you and to James for really rallying around them and bringing them enough information so they knew what they had to do to repair the senior center and to put it on the ballot. So they have a great amount to thank you for.
I got a feel-good story. So on the heels of our discussion with Wayne today, I was able to wake up in the morning. And we talk about the maintenance of Wayne and how we're not really mowing it and doing the things, but Wayne is beautiful. Even when we're not doing anything to it, it's just natural state. It is amazing, the color that comes off of Wayneland. But this past weekend, I woke up and there's this little path that's mowed on the back nine. And amazingly, there was an entire high school track cross-country team running back and forth for almost 45 minutes to an hour. They would come and go, come and go. It was amazing. So it's amazing the little things that we do in life can have such a profound impact, especially on our youth. So thank you to the city for making that happen, so.
Hi there. We lost one of our family recently, and I was going to do a moment of silence tonight, but it's kind of late, and I'd like to do it on our next council meeting. But I was thinking, we're building two new stations. You know, it wouldn't be bad to name one after Kirk. And that'd be 45's up there. It's a small station, he worked out of it a lot, and it's just food for thought. You know, just think about it outside, okay?
I'm so glad you brought it up. I'm heartbroken. A man that helped bring my daughter into the world is gone too soon. So thanks for bringing it up. I wish there was something, some way to express those feelings. But anyway, I'm glad you talked about it.
I just have a quick question because we've toured all the fire stations and I have zero recollection. Are there any plaques that sit on any stations that commemorate heroes of the past for Bothell?
Not that I'm aware of. You know, in most departments, when they put them, they'll put them by the flagpole at the station, you know, in memory of.
Yeah. If we end up with just a little bit of squidging room in our budget, that would be a nice thing to put at our fire station and at our police station of just, you know, old call of honor and put names up there as time marches on.
Anything else anyone wants to talk about? All right. Do we need a motion to close the study session? Second. I'm second. All in favor, raise your hands, say aye. All right, have a great night, everybody. Bye.